Call the February fifteenth meeting to order. Informational items. President.
That's good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the trustees who came over to our new Hope, Hornet Hope Center, which is a rebranded room closet and pantry. We'll hear a great presentation during the report from the Student Affairs Area, but many of us had a chance to have a sneak preview today, and I want to thank the trustees for joining us. I wanted to also, which isn't included in my report, just let everyone know that SUNY Broom was ranked number two by Ed Smart as one of the best community colleges in the state of New York. So number two, based on a variety of variables, but mostly starting salary of our graduates, satisfaction of our students, retention rates and completion rates. So we're very excited and you'll hopefully.
Who rated us?
Ed Smart. And we're gonna get lots of press as a result of that ranking. You'll hear some reports coming up very soon. This is an update regarding our enrollment. This is the, at the end of the second week of classes, we are up. So we're up about 137 students, but down at TE. This is as a report of, from last week. Many of our increased enrollment is based on fast-forward students, so the number of high school students that we have. We registered approximately 175 more fast-forward students during this time last year. We continue to celebrate Black History Month, and our students and professors are reflecting on the contributions and legacies of African-Americans. I sent a message to the college community reminding all of us that there's still some work that needs to be done in order to achieve a society that is truly inclusive. But so far, our student has, our campus has participated in a showing of the color purple, a presentation by Dr. Melvin Whitehead of Binghamton University. And we took a trip to SUNY Geneseo to hear civil rights activist Angela Davis. There are other Black History Month activities that are listed on our website under the heading Black History Month Diversity and Inclusion. On February the fourth, we had a successful supervisors forum, inviting all staff that have supervisory responsibilities together, together to talk about operational issues in a face-to-face setting. The meeting really was to openly communicate policy, to communicate processes so that we all hear the same message. We will continue to have supervisor forums, supervisor meetings a few more times this year. And so far, people have been very receptive and positive about the opportunity to get together. The topics for this meeting included space and room reservation processes, weather-related closing, and the budget development process. Hopefully, you'll hear a little bit more about our strategic plan. Yesterday was our first strategic planning committee meeting. Trustee Testani and Associate Vice President Dean Kim McLean are leading that effort. Yesterday was our first meeting where we began by reaffirming our commitment to civility and then began the process of looking at our mission, vision, and values. We will have continuous meetings as well as members of the community. And hopefully, by the end of the semester, we will have a strategic plan that we can then work, flush out, and have available to the trustees for approval in August. We, you'll hear a little bit more, so I won't spend a great deal of time talking about our interned events program. I believe it's part of information in the packet to be approved tonight. We did receive, thanks to Governor Hokel, $196,996 that was awarded to SUNY Broom for scholarships for students as well as transportation vouchers in the areas of computer science, engineering technologies, and hospitality. We have faculty beginning to roll out the internships programs in computer science as well as engineering technologies and hospitality. Other events that round out my report was I gave a presentation to the Sertoma Club earlier this week. Today, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Marjorie Chola, Danielle Britton, and I went to Raymond Corporation, a really wonderful tour of the facility. We had a great thought and conversation about how the college can engage more in the workforce development needs of Raymond Corporation, as well as how we might strategize to be a better workforce development provider in the energy space, use leveraging our relationship with the Raymond Corporation. When I, on February the 23rd, I will be participating in a roundtable discussion with Senator Webb and Assemblywoman Lopardo on the Southern Tier Economic Development initiatives being proposed by the governor. And, and finally, the BCC Foundation is having its alumni event, a Black Bears game on February the 24th, which will round out a lot of activity for the multiventury. That is my report. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Dr. Hawkins? Thank you. Student affairs, Dr. Ross.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. The report that summarizes what some of the departments have done, EOP, the Dean of Students' Office, and Athletics is in here for you to read. Tonight, I, I would like to introduce Lori Brewer, who is our Coordinator of Supplemental Services, which is a new position that supports special cohorts like the student parents, our homeless students, our foster care students. I know I'm missing some cohorts. I'm really sorry, Lori. And she, what she's really here is to share much more about the pantry and the closet and the clothes closet. I would like to thank Kathy and the Foundation for the support in garnering $100,000 to support the food pantry from Avengard, as well as Campus Services Facilities, Dave and his team, for really bringing the pantry and the closet to life with all of our begging and screaming about, can we get it done? Can we get it done? Can we get it done? They got it done, and it looks amazing. So I will turn it over to Lori, who works out of the Dean of Students' Office, to share about the pantry closet. And Lori's shy. Nice to learn.
You actually just did my first paragraph for me, so thank you. Well, good evening. I am Lori Brewer, the new Supplemental Support Services Coordinator. And as Dr. Ross said, I, I do bring lists because I forget all of them. That means I do work with some of our at-risk populations. And by at-risk, I really mean they have barriers that could prevent them from graduating, that could prevent them from finishing their degrees. And it's students experiencing homelessness. It's student parents. I work with students who are on conduct probation, the non-EOP foster students. I oversee the emergency grant fund. And now, I oversee the food pantry and clothing closet, which we are now officially using the new name, which will be the Hornet Hope Center. And we're changing it to Hornet Hope Center because hoping it's gonna expand and turn into more services than we've ever had. These pictures up here show you, originally called the Broom Closet. It was in a room in the AT Building, AT 120. It was very small, had food on one side, clothing on the other. So, yeah, I harassed and begged people until I could get it moved over to our new location. And really, Dave and company, amazing work in a month for what they were able to get done for us, everything from packing it up and moving it to the new location. So this is what it looked like before we started. It really was just a, an old classroom. I'll kind of tour up. The second picture there is when construction and painting got rolling. Next pictures are, it's, the pictures really don't even do it justice. We have brand-new ceiling and lights and floors and a new paint job. And we've got it set up so when you walk in, it's over in Science Building 208. When you walk in the door, the first thing you're gonna walk into is the food pantry. We've got shelves stocked with food right now. We have a fridge, we have a freezer, we have a microwave, we have a toaster. I have it set up that I want students to come in anytime, for anything. Come in and grab a cup of coffee and go, grab some snacks between classes, grab something out to heat it up in the microwave. We have a table. Sit down and eat it there. We have room in the room next door. They could sit down and eat. To me, it's, it's the activity piece of it. I need the students in there all the time. They also can come in and get lots of groceries. You know, we have students that are living in the dorms, and they have full kitchens, but they have no pots and pans. I have single parents with six kids that are cutting their hours at work because they're trying to finish their nursing degree. So it really is, our student population, it's, it's, you can't put it in one group. It's so many different things that we're looking at here. And the big thing is the way it was set up before, the food pantry was open all the time, and people could come and go and take whatever they wanted at any time. One of the issues that came up with that was our donations decreased because we weren't able to tell people, this is what we're doing with your donations. They had it that way because they wanted to reduce barriers for students. They didn't want students to feel embarrassed. They didn't want them to feel bad that they had to come and get a little extra help. So I, I truly believe there's a way to do this where we can eliminate that and still keep track of who's coming and who's going. And that's what we've done. We've set it up so we have, it, it is just for students as well. So we ask students, can we see your ID? And we scan it. Alls we track is their V number. We weigh any donation that comes in, and we weigh anything that goes out. So now I can say to somebody, you gave us $500. We bought 300 pounds of food and it served 65 students. It's not giving them, you know, any, any deep-down, you know, hidden details, but we can show what we're doing with it. And I think it's working. I've had students actually tell me that it is embarrassing for them to come and get help. They said it'd be embarrassing no matter what. And they've actually said that the way it's set up now, that they're good with it. They're comfortable with it. And they said, you know, you make it, you make it fun in here. Because who knows if you're coming in for a cup of coffee, if you're coming in for groceries. The back room is our clothing closet. And I love it. First time Dr. Ross walked in, she said it looks like a store. We have so many clothes that have been donated. We have them all separated out. We've got them lined up with women's and men's. And for the first time ever, we're starting a children's section. Against one wall, we have personal hygiene items. We've collected some school supplies. We've collected some housing items, household stuff. I haven't taken anything anyone wants to give me. I've got pots and pans on the shelf. We'll find room for it. And again, we're gonna start a children's section for clothing, for diapers, for wipes, for baby food. I've had students ask for pet food. Because, Evan, I don't know the number. How many students live in the dorms?
We're about 200, right?
200. How many students do we have on campus? Over 3,000. So the majority of our students aren't on campus. They are working. They're out in the community. I've also partnered with, this has made me very happy. One of the nursing professors reached out to me and said she teaches psychology nursing. And the students have to do some kind of a community internship. And she said, can I send them to you so they can work with these populations? So every Tuesday and Thursday from nine to three, I've got a nursing student working in the pantry. And every one of them has had a great story, and they've been fantastic. And they're very good working with the students. And I had one of them tell me this week, I wish I'd have known this was here because last semester, she said, I was deciding between gas money for clinicals and dinner. I had a student walk in today, another nursing student with me, and he was visibly shaking because he hasn't eaten since Saturday. And I'm trying to give him cupcakes to bring his blood sugar up while we're telling him that he needs to grab a bag and take what he needs and get stuff he needs. We hear all kinds of stories. It's, it's, when I first took it over, a part of me thought I was gonna get rid of the clothing closet because I wasn't sure. Originally, it had come from the idea of a career closet. So students needed clothes for interviews. They could get them there. And after my first week, yeah, I decided I'm keeping the clothing closet, and we're expanding it, and I'm taking anything because students are in there every day. And they go through it, and they take stuff. And it's, it's intriguing to me how much the students really, really are using the services here.
When you get to clothing and you go through and eliminate the things that you wouldn't wear.
Well, so.
I wouldn't wear.
We're, we're getting in, with the Avenged Grant, we're gonna be getting a washer and dryer, which is gonna be very helpful, too. So right now, the clothes that I have in there, and you were over there. So you saw, in the back room, I have bags and boxes of clothes. I haven't even gone through it because I don't have the room. So we're gonna be buying new shelves and new racks. And I've got lots of volunteers already willing to sort it out and get it cleaned up. And, and I, I do think probably before we do that, the first thing we're gonna do is go through what's out there and potentially get rid of the stuff that we know is not gonna go. And we can donate that elsewhere, too. But I'm finding really that it's, students are taking anything and everything that, and as stuff comes in, we didn't have a lot of men's stuff. And a retired biology teacher last week came by with a huge box of her husband's beautiful sweaters and sweatshirts and stuff. And I said, hurry up, let's fill the shelf because we have none of this out here. So we got that out there, and the shelves half-empty already, you know? So I've had students come in looking for clothes to wear to a funeral. So it's, the need is there. It really is. Right now, we have a, we have it open all day long while the campus is open. We are going to be doing some evening hours because we do have evening weekend classes. So I'm gonna try to coordinate those hours with those classes. Really trying to get the word out there is the big thing. I've been blasting campus with, with some announcements. I've gone to classrooms. I've gone to division meetings. I now have professors asking if they can bring their classes to pantry. And one criminal justice did it this week, and one of the students ended up staying afterwards and worked for an hour. So I'm getting surprisingly more volunteers from students than I thought I would, which I'm actually realizing that I really like having the students there themselves as the ones doing it. And the students coming in, interacting with them. Like I said, we do keep track of who's coming in and out, but it really is just a number. And the students are okay with that. So far, I've not had any complaints. So when I took over the food pantry back in November, so November and December, I tracked 41 visits by students to the pantry. Since January 29th, first day of classes, only Monday through Friday, because we're not open on the weekends, today we hit 102 already in under three weeks, more than half of what we did in two months in the other location. So the word is getting out there. I have a fun little board that I really am handing the chalk to students and saying, right up there, what you want. And I would take pictures of this and send it out to the campus with a list telling people these are what students are requesting, in addition to the, the regular supplies that we need. One thing that my message I've been trying to get out there is people are used to shopping for pantries in bulk. I want people to shop for meals. I have so much tuna and chicken. I have no mayonnaise. I have a ton of mac and cheese. I have no milk and butter. So if you're buying the pasta, buy the sauce. Think of meals when you're shopping. What else? Right now, I'm up to, as of today, 14 volunteers. Eight of them are students. I also found out yesterday that I can request federal work study. And that went up on the internet today on the website, too. So I'll be blasting that, trying to get students to come and actually get paid to work in there. So we had a grant come in. It was Swipe Out Hunger. We've had that before. That was a $3,000 grant. We used most of that to do the remodeling of the space. We had a lot of donations come into the foundation that were gifted back to the college in a grant. Also, we used a lot of that for renovations with the new Avenged Grant, the $10,000. Except we're gonna get a washer and dryer, we're gonna get some racks and new shelves, we're gonna restock supplies. But we, we've got a lot of things to do yet. It's, it's a work in progress. Every day, we change something else in there. I did just this week reach out to Chow. I'm gonna be trying to collaborate with them to get hooked up with their services and the Southern Tier Food Bank as well. As of today, since January 29th, we've taken in 460 pounds of food and clothing. 318 pounds of food went out and 50 pounds of clothing went out. So they're keeping us right at a level spot there. And, you know, this really is all just for students. It's all free. And they're welcome to take whatever they want.
Thank you. Any questions?
Lori has taken on this role with so much passion and compassion and empathy. It's incredible. It's incredible to see how dedicated she is working through curtailment, evening hours, weekend hours, to make sure that the students get this support. And so I, I wanna actually really thank you, Lori, for taking the lead in this and being so dedicated to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, 1.3 Student Assembly, a Hong girl is not here today. Well, we have Eva. Am I making mess of that name?
Uh, no, it's your great.
That's the first time I've been told that today.
Um, there's the, those students that we reported from Olegro or?
Thank you. BCC Foundation Report, Kathy Williams.
Well, my report is in the packet, so you all can see the details around our finances and increasing activities. We're pretty active in our appeals right now. As Dr. Hawkins mentioned, we have the evening at the Binghamton Black Bears. And we're up to 86 people registering now that we had said that Dr. Hawkins was coming. Looking through some pictures of not responding. We're looking forward to that. The magazine is in the design phase, and I know I say this every time, but this is an amazing. Should, should I say? Sprint Scholarship Application is open. And we are actually right on par with the number of student applicants as we had this very day last year, which is 209 students. The community students who apply for scholarship, that number lags because they're not really in that mindset in February in high school. So we're doing a lot of work with the guidance offices and local schools, and we'll do many more pushes in that regard to get those up. But that's what's going on in the Foundation.
Thank you. Facilities, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have my report. Real quickly, probably most importantly, as I've been reporting for the last few months, we've had difficulty in getting building permits approved for some of the work we have ready to go on campus. Recently, we finally did get a building permit issued for the Library of the Business Building HVAC project. And within days, the contract was underway. In fact, a couple of weekends ago, we, the contractor was in. We got the new units lifted to the roof along with the steel, and that, that project is well underway. We had a very constructive and productive meeting with the Department of Public Works Commissioner at Broom County, Roger Brown. And he fully understands the predicament we're in, and he has committed to doing whatever he can to make sure that the remaining permits that we have outstanding are issued very quickly. A mini master plan study is ongoing. The user group met back on January 23rd. All the feedback has been received from the, from the members of the, the user group. And the architect is now developing options and strategies for the buildings, in particular, specifically the Student Services Building, Old Science, the Library in Wales. For the Decker Nursing Renovation Project, project cost estimates have been reviewed by the project team. We are going to meet within the next week to begin to develop the strategy for construction and the expenditure of the funds that we have available. See, we, facility staff, again, in addition to the clothing closet, completed construction of a sound studio over in the library. We also are in the process of creating a, or providing access, should I say, to a gender-neutral bathroom in the Campus Services Building. We have two gender-neutral bathrooms in Campus Services. Unfortunately, they're only accessible to the maintenance side of the building. So we're going to provide accessibility so that the music, student staff, purchasing office, and the mailroom have access to that gender-neutral bathroom as well. And with the, the prodding of Michael Sullivan, even though we, we hadn't had any damage to the units, we have five compressors that are outside down at the CEC. They've got protective covers. They've got protective covers, but we have a lot of snow and ice that fall off the roof. So our crew, the same ones that did the food pantry, the same ones that did the sound studio. The same ones that do all the work on campus are in the process or have finished, should I say, construction of a shed roof. Over those five compressors down at the C E C so so that uh. To prevent any potential damage to those compressors. Um. The rest of the uh. Information on my report has been reported on. Pretty much every minute month and uh. I would be more than happy to take any questions then.
Thank you. Thank you. Budget and finance update. Michael Sullivan.
Uh thank you. Uh so uh most of the standard reports are in your packet. Uh the budget forecast. Is the same as what you've received over the last couple of months. Most likely next month. Once the spring spring uh enrollment numbers kind of settle in, uh. We'll update that forecast. I don't expect it to be uh materially different. Uh one thing of note, the investment report is in your packet. You'll be. Uh taking action on an updated investment policy. Which pretty is pretty consistent with the policy we are we we have been following. It'll be uh New York State Controller has. Guidelines around investment policy for government and government type entities, so it pretty much mirrors that. But in that report, you'll know year to date, we the college has earned approximately two hundred thousand dollars in investment earnings already. So that will uh we didn't really budget too much. Uh and as you know, interest rates have been fairly high. So that will that'll help balance uh the budget against the uh. The elimination of the BAP program. Uh just a couple of other things of note. Um. Uh Bonadillo, our external auditors, will be uh here at the March Board Meeting to present the. College's fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh fiscal year, which ended August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And the college will also be presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. For Broom County, the capital project. Uh requests that would will go to the county executive after the after the board. Uh approves uh the capital projects uh uh next month. And finally, uh we've. Been very active with the housing refinancing project. We have at least three major institutional investor groups that have shown pretty strong interest. In uh in in that refinancing. Again, uh the Housing Corporation is. Very interested in converting from a ten-year bank note to thirty-year bonds. Uh tax-exempt bonds, so um. So we'll have more information probably in a couple of months related to that, probably get some term sheets and take a look at. What kind of financing packages uh the investor groups uh will present. To both the Housing Corp as well as to the college. Uh and that uh completes my report.
Thank you. Okay, one point seven uh fifty eligible for term appointment, Dr. Kelly.
Standard, just standard uh term appointments.
One point eight media just.
Standard report this morning.
All right, two point oh approval of January eighteenth uh board meeting. Uh the men is I. Hope that you all had them and read them. Can I entertain a motion? Mark second it Anthony. Approval.
Alright.
All favor. Motion through. Okay, um the. Finance of Haggerty Committee recap. We had a meeting. All actual items were approved. Do we need a motion to accept that? Second.
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Preferred agenda action items. Okay, they've all um. Been vetted. Uh we will take them as a group. Someone like a motion, we make a motion? To accept it? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Alright. Aye.
Repose? Okay, or currently approved? Action items. Five point one, recommended approval of revised policy. Uh the the investment policy. Uh can I have a motion there? On the floor?
This is the policy you were referring to? Yep.
That is, it is, right?
Yes.
Okay, you. Motion second, Margaret. Um all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposition? Motion approved. Five point two, recommend approval of legal studies of A S program? Move. Our address, I think, second. Hey, all questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Five point three, Richmond approval of accounting A S program.
I'll move it.
Mark second? Uh questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion approved. Okay, six point oh. Um. If motion that is uh we had a request on a second session?
I'll move it.
Mark second it? Uh in favor?
Alright, aye.
Do we have to state the purpose?
I'm sorry?
We have to state the purpose of the meeting.
Oh, yeah. I didn't get a note here. Okay, um. Good as a session for. Proposed of discussion confidential issue. Hmm, okay. We have motion?
Can you flesh that out a bit on the confidential issue?
I'm sorry.
Could you flesh that out personnel?
As a personnel matter.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, was that a vote of approval in second session? We voted.